I believe it works. So, welcome everybody to tonight's meeting of the Belgrade Planning Board. May sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Sarah Langgett, the chair, is unable to make it tonight. And so she asked me to run the meeting. To get things started, why don't we do a roll call, starting off with you, Penny, just for the minutes?
Okay. Penny Morale.
Nick Sicaro.
Peter Sargent.
George Seal.
Craig Alexander.
And also here is, from the town, is the town code enforcement officer, Hans Rasmussen. If you could introduce yourself.
Yeah, Christopher Asbridge.
Chris is here, online via Zoom. We also have Mr. Ayers, David Ayers. Did I get that correct?
Yes, sir. That's correct. Ayers.
Very good. So, the first item on the agenda tonight is Mr. Ayers' application. I don't know if you have any summary for us, Hans, or Mr. Ayers would like to walk us through it? Or you ready to go read the questions from the board members?
I'll give a brief summary. Mr. Ayers has a slice of property that is between Meson lots and Lake and the railroad tracks. Currently has an old boathouse on the shoreline. He's proposing to remove this old boathouse and build a small cabin back further from the water, but also away from the setback from the railroad, which is thirty-three feet.
So, how much is it?
Thirty feet.
Thirty feet?
Yeah. But there's an A-line. So he took some photos this morning and added them to the back of the packet. It was not online. We emailed Mr. Ayers copies of the photos where he has staked out the corners and put some ribbons on some trees to indicate where he plans to put the proposed structure. You can see there's a footpath coming in that's crushed stone already. That would be to be thought. It's, I mean, he's really doing minimal disruption to what is there, what exists.
Which side of the road? Is it between railroad tracks and lake?
Yes.
Or is it on the other side of where they're at?
The photos will show that the lake is on one side and the railroad track is on the other side of this portion.
I can see the railroad, but I can't see the lake.
Same page.
Oh, I see the top of the roof. Okay. All right. Yeah, I got you.
I put some little red bull's eyes at the base of the stage so that it might show up a little bit better. David, is something you'd like to add?
I think you've covered it pretty well. I'd like to construct a small cabin. Yes, that's about it.
We'll have a composting toilet and your carry-in water, right?
Carry-in water. Pack out everything, pack it in, pack it out, carry in water, composting toilet, yes.
So, in other words, it was a boathouse, but it's not going to be a boathouse now. It's going to be a cabin for women to stay in when they're there.
You're going to eliminate the boathouse.
We'll remove the structure, yes. If this is approved, we can remove that structure.
But you're talking a cabin to replace a boathouse. So I'm asking, is that going to be a residence when he's here? Or is it going to be the same use as a boathouse?
It'll be, it'll be similar use. It won't be a residence. I'm not going to stay there year-round because of the nature of the access road.
But it'll be like a camp when you, not a boathouse.
It'd be like a camp, correct, with a garage, small garage portion.
With a small garage.
You can see that on the illustration of the house. There's a small space sectioned off for a garage.
And the nine hundred square feet that you're proposing for the cabin with includes the garage portion as well, correct?
Correct.
Mr. Ayers, there's no way you're going to be able to see this, but this one photo, Hans, is this the boathouse?
It is.
Okay, thank you.
He has copies of the photos. I emailed the tenants.
Yes.
Any trees that have to be removed for this?
Hans? How many trees coming down there? Just three or four?
Three or four, yes, depending on how I can fit the, once I get the contractor in there. I think three to four trees, yes.
They're all under ten inches. They're not, they're not sorry.
I think you can see most of them from the photos you have. I didn't get a chance to print those out, so I can't really go back and forth. Yes, I can too.
That's an empty lot of the boathouse.
You can see some of them are wrapped in a red ribbon. Some of the trees that need to be removed in the first picture. And the second picture.
So, how many feet is the front portion of the structure from the lake?
From the lake, it's approximately thirty feet from the coast to the stone wall. And you can, there is a stone wall there. You can kind of see it in the photographs that was pre-existing. You could see a thirty-foot designated in the one photograph of the drop at the rise, the two-foot rise. I'm not sure what page number that's, that is on your packet. But you can see a bunch of circles, which indicates.
Yeah, that's good. Thank you. And the question is, so it's from that rock wall back to the building, but how many feet is that approximately?
Oh, that's probably ten to fifteen behind the rock wall. But it's thirty feet from, it's thirty feet up to the rock wall itself.
So, let's say it's, let's say it's ten feet, thirty, that's forty, and, okay.
So, the entire structure will be within seventy-five feet of the normal high water line?
Okay.
Which is, right, which is under.
So, how high is it going to go?
He's allowed to go up to a thousand square feet.
You know, up to the height of the building.
Oh, twenty feet.
What's he, what's he, what's he thinking?
He's not, yeah.
David, what's the height of your structure?
Says twenty feet. Says twenty feet on the groin.
It's, yeah, no, that's, there was another one. It's sixteen, approximately sixteen. I don't see where it says twenty. Does it say twenty anywhere? It max, that, that, it would max out at twenty, but I'm looking at sixteen.
Because you have one drawing here that he's showing you right now. It says twenty feet with a question mark. So you change it to sixteen feet?
Yeah, we, we don't have a groin that indicates sixteen feet.
Yeah, the last one does, yeah. It's saying, it looks like it's.
Oh, I see. Okay, so we have a conflict between the two joints.
Oh, yeah. All right. We have it. And then, so what's, what's the slope of the land going down?
It's pretty flat, I mean.
Little, twenty-five percent or thirty percent slope?
Very little, but if he went further away from the lake, he's going to be on the slope to the return track, so. I wouldn't want to try to dig into the rail, but.
Yeah.
Well.
And what's, what's with the, what's with the, what? The.
In Los Arcos, six acres.
You're five point six acres within.
Five six acres.
Point six acres. So we got to figure, you know, previous, you have twenty percent. What's the twenty percent? That figure?
Well, we start with zero, so, yeah. Pretty sure it says twenty, twenty percent is five thousand two hundred and twenty-seven square feet. He's going to be well below that.
Okay. Yeah, he's an existing building there, so he can, he can do it.
Mr. Ayers, what kind of foundation are you going to have under your cabin and garage?
We're looking at, at this point, we're looking at just cord concrete. I'm layman at this, so I can't really speak in much other, much other terms than that.
So, is that a slab or a foundation?
Excuse me?
A slab or a foundation frost wall?
Yes, that, I would look at, I would look towards that, yes.
Slab.
How much soil disturbance are you anticipating? Are you going to have to bring in some fill for underneath the slab or? Where, where, where I'm heading with this is if it's over a cubic yard, the contractor has to be certified by DEP.
He means.
I can't answer that accurately, sir.
I can answer. It's, yeah, so if it's put in a slab, then it's going to be. They only use a DEP company.
Okay, so we can handle that through a condition of approval. So, what we're discussing is there's a requirement in state statute and in our ordinance that when there's over a cubic yard of soil disturbance or fill, that the contractor is certified for soil erosion control by DEP. And so we'll handle that as a condition of approval. Normally, how that goes is we'll require you to provide that information, which is a name and their certification number to the code enforcement officer de Hans prior to the start of construction.
That's if I use a slab. If I use a slab and there's a greater than one cubic yard of soil disturbance.
Which there will be.
Which there will be. Even if you do frost walls, it would be, either way, you're going to need one.
Okay.
To do this yourself, or are you going to hire somebody?
Oh, I'm going to hire local, local help. Everybody's, everybody's going to be local, going to go through Hammond for any, any materials. Yeah.
So, I mean, most, most of these guys around here that's going to do any earthwork are certified, so don't let that deter you in any way.
Yeah, yeah.
You just pick a number when you decide on who you pick as a contractor.
Okay, thank you.
So, they're all, almost all of them are all certified, so.
Nick, do you have any questions that haven't already been asked?
Do I? I'm sorry, do I have questions?
No, I was asking one of the board members on, sorry, Pete, Craig, you have anything?
I will go ahead.
I don't have any questions either at this point. I, I foresee two, two conditions of approval. One, dealing with the submission of the contractor name and a DEP certified contractor name and number, and the usual stormwater runoff standard condition. Mr. Ayers, we have a standard condition that goes on all approvals for new structures that requires the owner to put into place a way to manage stormwater coming off the roof. The, we rely on, and it's your choice, one of the methods advocated by DEP in their best management practices, which is available on the town website. And if you have any questions about that, when the time comes, Hans can help you with that as well. Certainly, one of the easiest and the way that a lot of people go is to just put a a crushed stone trench, filled trench at the drip line, capturing the, and infiltrating the stormwater coming off the roof that way. But there are other options as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Then you do it last minute.
Is this within the limit of distance from the shoreline?
It is.
Okay.
Well, it's an approved law, and there's only so much space, this point six acres. So, he's removing what's on the lake and it's actually coming back for him. And it's an approved law, so kind of have to.
Oh, okay.
He has a little bit of square footage, you know, he's still, I mean, even though he can't make this up now.
We're essentially going to view this as move the demolition of a non-conforming structure and the construction of another structure being moved back as, to the greatest practical extent because of the railroad. That's quite limiting factor, as you probably know.
So, we can do that even though it's not within the limit?
It's a legal. It would be a whole different kettle of fish if he wasn't demolishing or had that boathouse to demolish and was demolishing it. Legally, it would then be considered an entirely new structure and, and then, you know, we'd be up against a hundred-foot setback.
So, he's not.
But that's not the case here.
He's not demolishing the boathouse?
He is demolishing the boathouse. I'm sorry if I confused you. He's demolishing the boathouse. He's proposing to demolish the boathouse. And the part of the ordinance that deals with demolitions like that of non-conforming structures allows you to build something as a replacement, but you have to move it back to the greatest practical extent. In this case, the railroad is a very limiting factor.
Yeah, gotcha.
And you know, if you're on the other side of the railroad tracks, up on, up on that other side.
Yeah.
Then that would be a, kind of a, so, but he doesn't. It's only a point six eight.
Yeah.
So, so people around the tracks down the lake, and it's an existing law that was already made. So, with the tearing down of the boathouse.
It's classified as a legally existing non-conforming law. So, it is a law in its entire, you know, as a single entity. And he claims.
Yeah, so we have to stay with him. So he's allowed a thousand square feet. They are twenty-five feet. So, basically, and he's tearing down the boathouse.
Yeah, thank you.
Also, I'd like to add one thing. On this application, there's a little discrepancy. You have one drawing showing it looks like twenty feet and the other showing sixteen. So, we'd want to clarify that, just for the record. And just also for the record, you could go twenty feet if you wanted to go twenty feet.
My apologies. I do believe there's a, I don't see any of my pictures having a twenty foot. My apologies if there is one. But I'm looking at sixteen, correct?
Okay, but you're a builder. So, if you look at his internal dimensions, he's got eight-foot ceiling. Joyce, and then eight-foot ceiling, raptors.
Yeah.
So, it's going to come between sixteen and twenty, and not eighteen.
Yeah.
Plus foundational, so he knows not to go over twenty, and that's our goal.
No, I was just saying, maybe play it out.
Yeah, you may want to put, just say, you can say, oh, can you go to twenty? They don't want to do it. The one with twenty feet, that's a question mark, right?
Yeah, that's all.
So, but you see, it's got eight-foot locks, eight-foot ceilings, you know, so.
Yeah, I see that too.
He's gonna, it'll be within the parameters.
Well, you, we could just say it's conditional, it's going to be higher than twenty feet. Well, that's a, that's a given law. That's a rule. So, we don't have to really put that into our description.
Well, let it just be reflected in the, in the minutes that it'll be greater than sixteen feet and twenty feet or less.
Okay, sixteen, less than twenty feet, yeah. Twenty feet or less.
It, you know, it would be more of a problem if sixteen feet was fine and twenty feet wasn't, but, but that's not the case here.
Right.
I mean, my preference would have been if all the drawings said the same thing too, but. Anything else? Board members? Hans, anything that we're missing that?
We approved the application of David Ayers with two conditions, one being a certified contractor and number. It's under Hans, our code enforcement, before, prior to the start of construction. And the second being DEP best management for runoff.
I think you can back.
So, let's put that on hold for a minute until we've gone through the findings of fact.
What, do we have to do that first before we make?
Yeah.
Okay.
But we'll go back to that, the paperwork.
I made that a long time ago, so the date ought to be up after.
Presented five sixteen twenty-four. Got that right. What I am going to alter is demolish boathouse and build cabin, because that's critical. So. He's going to demolish the boathouse and build cabin.
It does say that on, on my application.
Yes.
Number five on the application says remove existing boathouse structure and construct.
This is our final good facts.
Yeah, but let me go back and explain. There, there's a legal requirement that we have to meet. We have to make legal findings of fact and law, and we have a form that the town attorney has developed for us that we have to complete. It basically lays down the legal basis for why we're approving your, your.
Thank you.
And, and it, it doesn't have all the detail, obviously, that your application does, but you'll see in a moment how we address that.
Thank you.
So, let's see. Application was presented to the planning board on May sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Conclusions of law based on the application materials, testimony, statements, evidence, documents, and other materials submitted. The above findings of fact finds that the project is or is not a permitted principle use or uses of a non-conforming law, and that would be is a permitted use. Why don't we vote on that?
Yes.
Penny?
Yes.
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 George, also, yes?
Question?
So, five, zero?
Didn't we say that we'd go through all of it and?
We, there's one part that will do that, Penny, where there's, I don't know, a dozen or more
Oh, yeah.
that kind of all go together and refer to one section of, of land use standards. So, we'll do that in bulk, if you will, but we'll do each of the other of these findings individually. The first of which is we'll maintain and make a safe and help, safe and helpful conditions by a vote of the board, board found this standard was or was not met. I would suggest it was met. Penny, yes?
Yes.
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 Yes, so, by five.
Five to zero.
Five to zero, and recount. And as the rationale, I'm going to use our standard language of based on application and some middles and the public record. Second finding or conclusion of law is the application will not result in water pollution, erosion, or sedimentation of surface waters. By a vote of the board, board found the standard was or was not met.
Was.
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 Myself as well, was. Five, zero. Third finding, the application will adequately provide for disposal of all wastewater. By a vote of the board, board found the standard was or was not met. I, I suggest it is being met as a result of the composting toilet.
Yes.
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 George is, yes, as well. Five. Zero, yes. Fourth finding, the application will not have an adverse impact on spawning grounds, fish, aquatic life, bird, or other wildlife habitat. By a vote of the board, the board found this standard was or was not met.
Was.
Yes.
Yes.
Was five and nothing, yes. Was, was met. Sorry to keep on mixing it up and seeing if everybody's awake. On item five or finding five, the application will conserve shore cover and visual as well as actual points of access to inland waters. By a vote of the board, board found the standard was or was not met.
Would you explain that one, sorry?
The, if, so there, there are two items, three, two items, yeah, two, well, three items, I guess. So, one would be that it conserves shore cover. In this case, no clearing along the shorelines being proposed, so the native vegetation being retained. So, it meets that. It's not creating any because of that and, and because of the small nature, it's not a visual impact kind of issue. And, and the last one is if there had been like a public point of access. Really, this one's not applicable to this one, but if, for example, was a point of public access, the question really is, is it retaining that public access to the water body? In this case, it's not applicable. So, three, it's really asking us three questions.
They'll have access to the water.
Yeah, he does, private access, but for example, say, we got a proposal.
Lake Shore Drive.
Yeah, that's a good example.
For Lake Shore Drive, there's a public access that covers a whole street, nothing down the street.
Yeah.
So, the public access we'd be talking about, when that house was built, it's retaining that public access for everything, everybody else, not it.
Yeah, it rarely comes up.
Yeah.
Then, were, were we, are we voting? Yeah, we're voting. So, was or was not met?
Was.
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 George was as well. George was as well. So uh the standard was met by five to zero, yes, code. I suppose this next one might be not applicable, I'll leave that to you folks to decide. Uh the application will protect archaeological and historical resources as designated in the comprehensive plan. Uh we could either. Say it's met or not applicable, what's your pleasure? Not applicable, okay. Number seven, uh will avoid problems associated with floodplain development and use. Um by a vote of the board, the board found the standard was or was not met. Likewise, was uh George by the zero.
Would that be N A?
Yeah, I mean, the point is, it's not in the floodplain zone.
Right.
Which is the most. So thi- this is the uh finding that uh there's a whole host of uh embedded. Findings that we make and will. Uh so just bear with us, Mr. Ayers, uh. Uh this has to do with land use standards in the uh in section fifteen of the ordinance and. And some of these are not going to be applicable to your application and we're gonna, the profit, the reason we're doing, the way we're doing it is so weed those out. And only vote on the ones that are applicable. So the first one is um. Uh okay, well, it is in accordance with the provision of section fifteen land use standards by uh. A vote of the board found the standard was met based on the evidence in the record and and first is minimum lots uh standards. I mean, it's not a legally, a legal, nonconforming law, so I would say yes. Principal and accessory structures that applies. Campgrounds, not applicable. Individual private campsites, that's not applicable. It's not me if I if you disagree with me, uh commercial and industrial uses, that's not applicable. Parking areas, I don't believe there's any proposed.
What was that?
Parking areas. Roads and driveways, uh again, none's proposed. Signs, not applicable, none's proposed, stormwater runoff applies. Um septic waste disposal systems. Hans is a composting toilet considered a. Okay, all right, so that's. Essential services, that's not applicable with utilities and the like. Mineral exploration and extraction, that's not applicable. Agriculture, not applicable, timber harvesting, land management roads, N A. Clearing or removal of vegetation for activities other than timber harvesting, that's applicable. New trees are gonna come down, hazard trees, uh storm damaged trees and dead tree removal, none's uh. Being applied for, so that's N A. Exemptions to clearing and vegetation removal requirements that uh none is being requested. So that's N A, revegetation requirements, uh I don't believe we we need to require any revegetation, am I correct with that? So N A. Erosion sedimentation control, that's applicable. Shoreline stabilization, none's proposed or needed soils. Um that's not really applicable, because it's not a subsurface wastewater system. Is that, do I, do you agree with that, Hans? So N A then. Water quality, that's applicable. Historical and archaeological sites, that's N A. And resource protection, this is not a resource protection zone. So of the section fifteen land use standards that apply, uh we'll vote on on these en masse. Uh includes minimum lot standards, principal and accessory structures. Standard, uh the stormwater runoff standard, the septic waste disposal system standard. Uh the clearing and removal of vegetation uh to accommodate the cabin, um the standards that apply there. And the erosion and sedimentation control standard, and lastly, uh the water quality standard. So um. Again, uh by a vote of the board, board found the standard was met. Those that are applicable, that is, was met based on the evidence in the record as follows, uh so uh. Was met.
Yes, was met.
Uh I also vote yes, uh was met. Five to zero. Yes. Uh so lastly, that brings us to um the. Conditions of approval, um before we get to your yours suggested one, uh Craig, Mr. Ayers, there's two um. Standard conditions of approval that uh apply to almost all applications, uh. And I'll just read them for your benefit, you'll you'll have this in writing. Uh when you get your permit, but uh the first. Is uh to manage stormwater runoff from new or expanded structures in accordance with section fifteen I of the ordinance and. Main Department of Environmental Protection's best management practices is outlined in. Uh the the document entitled Conservation Practices for Homeowners, um. The uh tha- that's the document that you can find on the town's website under the planning board. Uh the second. Is uh one that basically says you're getting approval for everything you apply for, but nothing more. Basically, uh plane board's approval of this project is limited to that described in the application and depicted in the accompanying site plan and other application submitted. Submissions, any changes to or deviations from the application, site plan and other application submission. Submissions as approved by the plane board must receive prior approval by the board, including but not limited to, and then there's a long laundry list. Uh which I won't bore you with. And then we also um had a condition to. Uh incorrect me if I get this wrong, uh to submit um. The name and the 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 name and certification number of the D E P certified contractor part to Hans part to the start of construction.
And Dave, I've got a list, you got a name, I can look up the number.
Thank you. I'm sorry, are you, are you waiting for me for that name?
No, no, I'm I'm writing.
Thank you.
You just need to provide me that information before they start.
Understood, will do, thank you.
This is what you call a pregnant pause.
That's fine, appreciate that, thank you.
Is there another one, another condition I need? You just, you you mentioned the stormwater, right, okay. So we we have the two standard conditions plus uh the condition regarding the D E P certified contractor. So uh based on the findings of fact and conclusions of law. Sixteen twenty-four, the county bill grade plan, board approved by a vote of, uh so um. Yeah, you can do it again even.
Make motion that we approve David Ayers. Permit, which uh. The D E P certified number of the first contractor. Name and number to Hans before, prior to the start of construction and. Do I need to mention the other two?
No, plus the standard conditions.
Plus the standard conditions.
All right, a second?
I'll second that.
Nick, uh second the uh motion, Craig, uh all in favor, any?
Yes.
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 And I also am yes, so that vote of five to zero. Uh trolling application of Mr. Ayers, um. Of Mr. David Ayers. With the both conditions at a meeting, I am five sixteen twenty-four. Date three tones. So um. I'll uh sign this uh on behalf of Sarah. Okay, if it's done, we set people. One more piece of paper for us to sign, Mr. Ayers. You're almost there. Sir, I think we're all set, uh Hans will be um sending the permit to you with the other uh paperwork. On the documentation from from tonight's meeting. Any last minute questions for us before uh we're all wrap this up?
I don't have any more questions, thank you for your time, your consideration, and of course, for your approval, thank you so much.
Congratulations, good luck. I'm gonna email you a copy tomorrow that I'll scan in and I'll keep a hard copy in my office for the next time you're in town, okay?
Great, I look forward to seeing you, thank you so much. Bye bye, can I, can I leave now, or you need? What's that?
Yeah, all set, thank you.
Okay, thanks again.
So um. We'll move on to our next application, uh. Uh Chris is here, um Chris, I don't know if you wanna uh. Give us a thumbnail sketch of your application or Hans, if you have some uh summary you'd like to provide or?
I think he's more well-stoken than I am. Buddy just texted me, told me he tuned in, so hey, Dustin, thanks for coming on. So uh we're uh. We're looking to extend the back of our camp three feet, currently there's two three-foot extensions on the back of the camp, one of them is the bathroom. Um and it creates a weird layout, my cabinets are built into like the two-by-four walls, so we're trying to bunk that out. So that we can put pole cabinets in and just make the back of the camp one lane. Um in order to do that, we're also looking to expand our deck and cover it and screen it. Um so right now the deck's a hundred and twenty square feet, uh we're looking to go to the twelve-by-fourteen deck, and we're looking to add um. Fill in the back of the camp with about, it's about fifty-nine square feet. Um we wanted, we're we're over the one thousand square feet now with the existing structures that are on the. Um property, so we're gonna remove the platforms and stare down at the water. Um and remove some square footage off of the deck that's on the water um to compensate for the additions on the back. So I have some sketches there, um we've also, you know, since we bought the property, I think it's worth noting in twenty twenty-two, we we pulled out the. Rusted out septic steel septic tank and put in a nice um approved um Elgin system that. You know, it's helping protect the lake and done two projects now with Seven Lakes Alliance. Um riprap with that in infiltration walkways, um and we just completed a. Project in conjunction with the Foster Point Road Association, um because I basically had a river coming down my driveway. And the uh neighbor's driveway, so uh that made a contribution there, we got some matching grant money and we added some ditching and diverted the. Water from, you know, the road there, we planted some uh arbividee and some other vegetation ferns and. Um ground cover and pasta and stuff like that, just then, you know, added mulch where walkways were, so we're just trying to. I mean, there was, there was definitely a lot of runoff happening, so we're very conscious of that as we, you know, kind of approach this project.
Um the uh. If I understood everything correctly in terms of how the numbers worked out, and and you say this in your email to Hans, uh. Uh the um. By removing the uh waterfront deck, the wood platform that's down there and some stairs, uh. Uh when you balance that all out with the addition that you're uh proposing, that comes down to one minus one foot.
Yeah, it is, we're we're reducing the size of the waterfront deck, we're not removing that, but we're removing the platforms and. Staircase down to it, so the waterfront deck's currently two hundred and forty square feet, we're gonna reduce it to two hundred and twenty.
Uh right. Yeah, no, clear, thank you for correcting me. Uh the one question I had, and it was just because I was a little unclear on what I, on one of the drawings. Are you, are you also uh proposing to uh. Uh enclose uh the deck with a a screened.
And we're gonna, um you know, Hans and I talked about it, but just like we did in front of the camp, we did an infiltration walkway. Um and because we're adding a roof to the screening porch, we're gonna add some sort of infiltration um to where that drip badge would hit. Um right now, it's just like pasta, mulch, um but we'll, you know, we'll make it a little better than that.
I would just note uh that the uh. What the uh. Unvegetated surfaces are well under the twenty percent, so that's not an issue here.
Previous owner uh had a passion for not cutting trees and uh, while I appreciate that, it also killed a lot of trees. So I I kind of always joke that no one has more trees than I do.
We're doing good. And this is a fairly steep walk.
It is, yeah, um you know, we have two kind of flat areas. It is, yeah. Um you know, we have two kind of flat areas. Um and that's what we work with seven lakes on is just making sure that. Nothing's lost off of those.
My only question was uh Hans, you've been up to see the lot and you're familiar with.
More than he probably wants to. I like that. I asked a lot of questions like today.
It is in Foster Point, the resource protection slope area, so I mean, he's been doing everything. Obviously, he's. Calculating to this work, but that he's trying to preserve everything he's got, preserve it accordingly because. You know, he he didn't really have a yard. You know, he's got a lot of land, but it's slow. And it's hard to make functional. It's small, so.
Yeah.
He's safe and and usable. So he's been uh creative and very busy employing Seven Lakes Alliance to do everything the right way.
They're great people, so we're we're fortunate.
Nick, you have any questions?
No, just those are the concrete stairs you're gonna be moving. No, we're taking out the wooden stairs. Although, um yeah, and I I just sent you a picture of the wooden stairs because I was looking here and I have. Two pictures of the deck, but no picture of the wooden stairs. Did did you just get it emailed by any chance? And I can pull it up on my phone.
I don't have my phone with me, but okay.
Um I mean, I'll I'm happy to pass a picture around on my phone. Or you guys, did you wanna see the stairs?
Basically, he's got two. Stairways to the water right now, so he's eliminated one actually coming into.
That's the one I'd be at.
One six foot path, yeah, and that that shows up.
Yeah, yeah, I'd be eliminating the stairs.
Oh, yeah. You don't wanna take a trip on the top stair.
No, I mean, the concrete ones aren't terribly better, but. So.
So if you remove that, you will still have a.
I still set a concrete stairs.
Concrete.
Yeah, that if you see the infiltration picture of the infiltration walkways, you can see the bottom of the concrete stairs.
So again, you bring this warranty compliance because the code says one path for the water. He had two, which were grandfather, but he is eliminating one, so he's.
Is this the one?
Becoming more compliant.
That's the concrete. That's the one that's gonna stay.
That's interesting. It looks like crust stone.
Well, that's the walkway from the concrete stairs, but.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, and then that just and the water's right here?
Uh, yeah, the the.
I actually didn't pick up on the. Fact that this was in the resource protection uh slope district. Uh you may recall when we've had an application in that. District before, there's some uh unique requirements to it. Which this application meets, but I I think it's worth discussing uh and it has to do with um. The fact that uh soil erosion control, sedimentation uh. Uh measures have to be um part of an engineered plan. We have that here. Uh I think in that other application we did not, or maybe we did, I I can't quite remember, but anyway, it was somewhat more problematic, but um. The uh, you know, anytime there's a uh. Even expansion of existing structures, and this is relatively minor, but and um the uh. Uh excavation beyond Morton ten cubic yards um. Construction or expansion of foundations, frost walls, et cetera. Um roads and other things and but uh my reading of that, and I'm on page sixty, by the way, if anybody. Needs to look at that, it's uh it's uh X Resource Protection Slope District. Uh the uh. This seems to meet meet it. Meet it because of um the engineering company that's involved.
Yeah, yeah, very excavation of less than the auto.
Yeah. Oh, it might be. I I, yeah, I I don't. I don't pick it up on that. There's no, it's all on those.
Yeah.
So that's all different than our usual uh. Permit application. We don't see too many, and when we do, it's always on Foster Point.
Yeah.
My question is, um you said you're gonna um make it even better. Are you talking riff rap? To.
Oh, I so for the uh, so the house is as good as it's gonna get. We've got. You know, the infiltration in the front and then actually below that is the infiltration walkway at the bottom of the stairs. And then it's all more by seven lakes and we riprap the shoreline already. Um which was pretty bad erosion, honestly. I think there's a lot of that down there. Um but when I finish the porch. Because I'm adding a drip edge on the porch, I'm gonna make sure that the uh in front of the porch has the same either a infiltration. Um you know, probably not a walkway, just an infiltration ditch with crushed though.
Crushed though, okay, yeah.
And we're gonna replant um under the stairs and platforms that will be. So we've got a. A lot of nice vegetation there. Well, if not growing, obviously, I have the stairs and platforms and we'll uh we'll replant that with. Pasta and fern and stuff like that that holds it.
The stairs that you're removing, they look like they're in good shape. They look like they wouldn't know.
Yeah, my son and I just refinished them. Yes, they're wooden, yeah.
This will be more permanent.
Yeah, the concrete ones, they they exist already and they uh, yeah, they're gonna be there forever.
But that's a loss, isn't it? The other one, did you use it a lot?
You know, yeah, we're we're hemming it on um about it, but it's a. It allows us to have a. You know, full-size kitchen cabinets.
Oh. That's the deal.
Yeah.
Definitely a way to be improved.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So we're gonna um. Should be, we should be good. I might be back here in about thirty-five years asking for those stairs back, but we'll.
The additions um to the camp, um what kind of foundation are you planning for that?
So it's currently on post. Um we are, we are planning to um. Or at least discussing blocking in the bathroom. Um so that the plumbing could be utilized in the winter. It's not something we plan to as far as utilization do anytime soon. We we live in Gloucester about an hour away. We come here, we come here ice fishing, but I wouldn't be turning the water on for ice fishing. But while we're rebuilding that bathroom, we plan to block that in.
So that's not part of this application then?
So I was, you know, I hope I didn't mess this up, but I was told that um I have to get a. Permit by rule through the E P. To uh do that, but I I wasn't told that it had to be part of this application. Because I was disrupting the earth because of the earth disruption. So I could be, I I apologize if I'm incorrect.
Are you seventy-five feet at that point?
I the back of the house is. I'm I'm assuming it's seventy-five feet. The front of the house is forty. Yeah, so or so it's gonna be close.
Uh yeah, I I to be honest with you, the only reason I'm even asking is the question we had in this, the application before this. I'm trying to.
Right, right.
Figure out whether.
I'll be honest, we're not gonna be. It's, so is it a cubic yard?
Cubic yard.
Yeah, I mean, we'll we'll probably, it's it's all dug out already. You know, it's all exposed under there. And we're not like, we're not going way down. We're just gonna block it off with foam board. Just to protect the trap.
Rather than putting in a footing.
Yeah, we're not gonna do, we're not, we're not.
We'll do it by hand, you know?
Yeah, we'll do it by.
Okay.
It's.
Uh yeah, it doesn't sound like a cubic yard to me.
No, it's, yeah.
I.
Cubic yard is a little bigger than, I guess I, yeah, when I think about it.
Yeah. Um.
Couple wheels.
I I didn't know it was gonna be on poster what, but.
Yeah, so it's the that the house is remaining on concrete. They're concrete piers and then it's a post.
Yeah.
In the front.
Okay. Um any other questions before we move on? We ready to move on to the finding the fact, and I think we have an approvable application here. Same paperwork is.
Yeah, I know, I'm ready for it.
Yeah. Uh so this is the application of uh Chris Brassbridge uh on Fort Oak Raw uh Road. Uh for the removal of some deck and steps to provide square footage to expand the house. Uh application was presented to the plan board on May sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Um the uh first uh moving on to the conclusions of uh law. Based on the application materials, testimony, statements. Et cetera. Uh. The planning board finds that the project is or is not a permitted. Uh use under sections um fourteen. In other words, uh is it a permitted use in the in the zone that in which it?
The land needs table.
Yeah, the land use table, exactly. And in this case, uh I believe it is uh everybody in agreement with that.
Okay.
So is. A permitted principal structure. Uh. And then on to the individual standards. Um number one, uh will. The proposed project maintain safe and helpful conditions by a vote of the board, board found the standard was or was not met.
Was.
Was. Was. Was.
Uh I also was. Was five. Eight, zero, yes, vote, and again, it's based on. The application's submitted. In the public record. Number two, um. The application will not result in water pollution, erosion, or sedimentation to surface waters by a vote of the board, the board found the standard was or was not met.
Was.
Was. Was.
I also agree it was 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 was. Five to zero, vote yes. Um. Number three, uh the application will adequately provide for the disposal of all wastewater. By a vote of the board, the board found the standard was or was not met.
I'm talking about that.
Uh he he put in a new system in two thousand twenty-two.
Yeah, was, that's right.
Was. Was. Was.
Was, five to zero, was.
Yeah.
Uh number four, uh the application will not have an adverse impact on its spawning grounds, fish, aquatic life, bird, or other wildlife habitat. By a vote of the board, the board found this standard was or was not met.
Was. Was.
Was, five to zero. Yes.
I do have a six-year-old who's trying pretty hard to put a dent in that fish population.
If you like that expression.
Yeah, yeah, we kind of, some nice ones this year, ready to cope.
I'm good.
Number five, uh application will conserve shore cover. And visual as well as actual points of access to inland waters. By a vote of the board, the board found the standard was or was not met.
Was.
Was. Was. Was.
Uh I also was five to zero. Vote yes. Um will protect archaeological and historical resources. Um not applicable. We in agreement with that? Only like four of them in town, so.
Yeah, yeah.
And you're not one of them.
Railroad traps.
Yeah. I got a Fred story for you. It dawned on me. Um the uh. Uh number uh seven, will avoid problems associated with floodplain development used by a vote of the board, the board found the standard was or was not met.
Was.
Was. But was.
Was, five to zero. Uh and number eight is the uh. Uh section fifteen land use standard, so we'll do this in as a group as a. The uh uh first, we need to decide what your appful. Uh first one is minimum lots of uh standards that applies. Principal and accessory structure, just again, stop me if you disagree. Um principle and accessory structures. I believe that applies campground, it's not applicable. Individual private camp sites, not applicable. Martial and death releases, not applicable. Parking areas, not applicable. Those roads and driveways. No new ones or proposed signs and a. Stormwater runoff applies. Uh. Septic waste system uh applies, even though. It's already there. Federal services and a. Mental exploration and a agriculture and a timber harvesting and a. Clearing or removal of vegetation for activities other than timber harvesting. We didn't really ask about this. Is there?
There's no vegetation.
Yeah. It didn't look like it from the pictures, but. So N A, people agree with that?
Yeah.
Hazard trees, storm damaged trees, dead tree removal, none was proposed, so that's N A. Exemptions to clearing uh vegetation removal requirements, that's N A, that was not important. Revegetation requirements, that's N A. Erosion and sedimentation control that certainly applies. Um shoreline stabilization. That's N A, that's being proposed here. Soils, that's N A, because there's no new septic system being proposed. Water quality very much lies. Historical and archaeological sites, that's N A, and resource protection. I'll just put a note here that this is in the resource uh protection slope district. So um. Of that list uh of land use standards, uh we will vote on. Whether the following ones uh are being met, minimum lots standards, principal accessory structured standard. Uh the stormwater runoff, uh which. Will have that same standard condition, even though you have some proposals that are already in your application. Um the uh septic waste disposal system. Um. Erosion, sedimentation, control, and the resource protection. Uh which we discovered, I mentioned earlier. Um. So with with that, the board uh vote uh was or was not met.
Was.
Was. Was.
I also was um. Five to zero. Yes. So lastly, um. I don't believe there are any project-specific um conditions of approval that have been mentioned uh. That so far. Um we do have the two standard ones that I read earlier. Would you like me to go over those again?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um. Yeah. Thank you. Uh so I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept Chris Brassbridge uh. Application as well.
Second.
Second.
Okay, second one by Penny. Motion by Craig. All those in favor? And I also, yes, five to zero. So my. Where in the same section of the last application was back in the early nineteen eighties. There was a train derailment and oil went, uh, oil tankers went spilling into Mezloski Lake. Uh, I believe Fred was one of the responders to that. Fred, you know who else was? Rich Baker. He was an oil responder in fact.
Yeah, but so was there a historical or archaeological significant?
Register that with the, you know, fetch on that historical location. It's one we'd rather forget. So I think we're all set. Uh, I should say you're all set. Uh, Hans will be getting the permit to you.
Email good enough for doing. Perfect, and and I appreciate all the help today, man. Thank you much, so.
You're welcome, and we can see Fred, please say hi.
I will, yeah.
Um, I always like working with Fred.
Yeah, Fred, Fred's my great uncle. For those that didn't know, they work together, so. Um, wonderful to meet you guys. Yeah, I'm I'm going to camp tonight.
So we have a number of other items on the agenda that I think with Sarah not being here, we'll just skip over the first is. Elections of officers, you know, we didn't we do this back in January? I did, I did too, so I keep on wondering once.
I thought we postponed it.
No, I thought we.
Yeah, no, I'm pretty sure that, yeah.
For assistant.
Vice chair for vice, yeah.
I thought Sarah was out and we both, we tabled it to an estimating and.
Well, we did for some, I I don't know how it transpired, but we did have an election, which were required by our ordinance. Under pending ordinance to do once a year, and we did that back in January. So I think procedurally, we're okay. Do it again, but later, but whole business. Hans has crossed us out, but just for the record, Sarah had wished to discuss LD two thousand and three. Or literature, she's kind of cross, I'm I'm not certain what that entails, but we'll obviously skip that since that's her item. And so the next item is for us to review and approve the minutes, which. Our aunt has divided us copies with, these are for the meeting of April eighteenth. And May second, so why don't we take five minutes to review these and then we'll resume.
My name is misspelled, I mean, April eighteen, twelve, I have two hours. So my my nerves, but if you want to collect the rest, fine, but.
See the Tiki Bar made it into the minutes.
We had that one application last week.
Work schedule. So they they still haven't been back to the workshop stuff table.
They're taking it down. They're not, that's not allowed at that location. They haven't come back with a proposed new location.
Well, we discussed that if there was power, the house is there, a thousand square feet, they could add it to the house.
And they haven't come back with that.
You were talking about, I thought maybe it was something. Yeah, we did. I asked the same question you did at the last meeting, because there was nothing on the agenda.
So we've discussed, we'll, they tabled it, if they're moving back the other thing. Or that construction is under thousands or under the square footage, they could add it to the structure.
Yeah, it's documented there, but.
Well, they're gonna have to come back anyway, so. Be clarified then.
If they put around the house, there's going to be excavation, it's slow protection, engineer drawn.
Oh, that's the application that I was trying to recall earlier ones.
So it's gonna be more than this.
Soon as Nick gets back, it at least two of them. Uh, so we'll take up first the minutes of April eighteenth, two thousand twenty four. I wasn't present, I was out in Arizona, so. I don't have anything to say about this, but other than a note that Penny's last name is misspelled throughout the. Three up throughout the minutes, both. Well, members present and in the new business discussions. Anyplace else, Penny? Uh, and and on the third page. Any other corrections or needed edits? Those are you that were.
There's Dana Laby. She had Dana Larry, what is spelled, last name spelled L A B V E.
What page is that on?
And the car was. Spelled correctly.
Yeah, just once. No, 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 it's spelled correctly all the way through, just once on the decision on number one, on the second page. Great job done.
Be voting on this, Fred, Nick. And Peter and Penny. Everybody but me can vote on this, but I cannot. Uh, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion approved in minutes as amended.
Second. Seconded by Peter Sargent. Motion by Penny Moore. Uh, all those in favor, Penny? And I will abstain because I wasn't at that meeting, so approved with conditions. I approved with as amended, four to zero. The minutes of May second, two thousand twenty four. Any. See Penny, you were not at this meeting. Uh, I was, Peter, you were, Nick, and Craig, you also were at this meeting, so it's the three of us that will be voting. Uh, any. Corrections or edits?
Have wings.
Yes, absolutely.
I'll make a motion to accept a minutes of five to two thousand twenty four.
All those in favor?
Yes, yes.
I also, yes, proof written zero. So anything, if we're at the code enforcement officer. Or or whatever you want to call it, you think you have one.
Peter Bryan, a discussion topic, why don't we go there first?
So the expansion. We don't do percentage anymore.
Yeah, right, we're getting a, going back what? Past month or so, we had talked about one time, someone wanted to add, add, want to expand off to the side. And and they can't do it. And but going back when I was on to training and all that with. When I was on the board, you know, before. Uh, and. The DDP phone clock, calling the clock to you, you said the class up. And this is back in two thousand eighty area era back then. And I put the cover page on, mention and only got the handbook for sure and going on. That is, you know, distributed to the public and it kind of sounds thing. Man, where it's not really detailed out too much, but it is, it isn't, so it's just, it's a training document on the page sixteen. And I remember this and and I finally finally got around to looking at my paperwork. And I, and I Xerox this this afternoon, and it shows we're. Under what way back then and. Yet you could expand sideways and it would be legal, wouldn't be considered on floor. Would it would not increase the nonconformity, but our. Uh, code was changed back in two thousand eighteen or so, and it was, it is. We're not allowed to do that in the time of. Right?
Can go sideways.
As long as it doesn't exceed the square footage, they're gonna put room.
Well, I think Rich Baker, at the time, one month ago, he just brought that up and he pointed it out. And. You go into our ordinance, the talks, nonconformity, there's a piece of language added in there. Right beginning, first paragraph, there's a second paragraph. This is and add into. The further into the body of the the ready that we could do, you know, just like this is saying, but. I want to bring that up.
I think the case that we were discussing that was within the twenty five foot, when was John Swasher, he was ten feet off the link. And it was about a spanning volume within that first twenty five foot buffer. There is no extension of volume allowed unless the entire structure is within the twenty five foot buffer. That case, it was not, it was just a porch, so he was not allowed to go up sideways or anything. He, you know, had to put everything out back and he was wanting a second floor. So that became a discussion there. The other thing is. Another case we had out there on the Mezloski, the house was kind of cockeyed to the water. She would have gone sideways, she would have been going closer to the water body.
Right.
So a lot of it is dimensional to the structure and the lot.
Yeah.
So that's within, or is twenty five feet?
Well, that would have, if the house is cockeyed, well, then it would have been going towards.
Okay, so.
So you, that would have increased the nonconformity.
So if you're back, you know, twenty five feet up to a hundred, between twenty five feet and a hundred. The, if it is a building cock cockeyed, you can't bring that portion. And you go off to the side, if it gets closer to the lake, you can't do that.
Yeah.
But if it move further away from the lake, or stated the same. If it if it was allowed, depending on the situation.
Were in his relationship to the lake.
I just want to kind of clarify that, bring that, you know, I was. Uh, waiting to clear, and I just want to make sure that, you know, that it can go sideways and it's gonna be. It it's gonna be a ninety degree to the, basically to the shore. It was cockeyed, one part of the building is a, you know, um. Thirty degrees, no, that's really too much, but.
Yeah, as long as it's not getting closer to.
Okay. Yeah, it's always wanted to kind of clarify.
Hans, you have anything for us?
No. Not just yet.
Not just yet, that sounds ominous.
Certain parts to drop before you bring up, there's other issues that are being pending, so.
Okay.
Until all of that.
How how are we doing for applications in the waiting in the wings?
Uh, we got two for the next meeting. And a couple pending, I've got some like Mr. Ayers, he's been waiting a year, just because. He didn't, he's not, time isn't of the essence, so he kept saying, yeah, well, maybe next spring, so. That's why I wanted to get him in, I've got a couple more like that, that are saying, whenever, so I'll call them up if they're available.
Very good, uh, yeah, I want them waiting longer than they're necessary. Uh. Anything, uh, any last minute discussion items that, uh, before we adjourn? Any issues, people?
A second.
There you go.
All favor.
Yeah.
Your items. Very good, thank you all.
Thank you.
Good job, George.